I'm going to call the regular San Dimas City Council meeting to order. Is my microphone on? Okay. We're going to call the meeting to order and ask you to join us in a pledge of allegiance to the flag. Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. First item on our agenda is oral communications. It's an opportunity for members of the public to address the city council. The rules are simple. We ask you to give us your name and where you live, but that's not required. If you want to talk to us without telling us who you are, that's permitted by the law. You need to come to the microphone. We don't have sign-in cards or anything. You come to the microphone when it's vacant, and you have three minutes. The first, there's a light down by the microphone that's green for the first two minutes, then it turns orange for one minute, then it turns red. You're supposed to be finished when it turns red. So those are, those are the only rules.
Can I ask a quick question? So on the coyote issue, you've got that on the agenda.
We're going to take that in its regular place.
In its regular place.
Yes.
Second question about that is that we have, it's for D. Would we want to take that a little earlier in the other business section just because of the people here? I'm just wondering how long the other things are going to take because they all seem like important things.
I had planned to take them all just in their regular order.
Okay.
People, if anybody is here and you want to speak, the issue that Mr. Ebner raises is we do have a discussion later where the city council is going to receive a report on coyote issues and the things that, and sort of a status report of the work being done by a group of cities with the COG, and that's the Council of Governments of San Gabriel Valley. We, we're not going to take any action on that tonight. It's not an action item. It's for a report. If you want to comment about that matter, about coyotes in the neighborhoods, you may do that in either this three-minute time here or when we discuss that before we get the report, we will have another opportunity with the same rules applying a three-minute limit. So you can, you can comment at either time. But if you want to comment during this open time, you may do so now. So anybody like to address the city council?
May I approach?
Yes, please.
My name is Adriana, and I would like to express my concerns with the proposed coyote management plan. I do not see any biologists have been consulted. The articles reviewed have points regarding wild coyotes that cannot be applied to urban Removing coyotes produces more coyotes. We heard that one, and we have taken their land. They are counterpointed by actual studies that show that denser coyote population in urban areas than in rural areas. Coyotes follow humans, not the other way around. The plan is unrealistic because what drives coyotes to want to be around humans is everything we have: our pets, our pools, our fruit trees, all-you-can-eat buffet. Removal of attractants will be difficult, and enforcement is almost impossible. I mean, how hard it is to get your neighbor to trim their brushery. My main concern is that the proposed budget of $100,000 for citizens to learn how to haze, a practice that has zero scientific basis with urban coyotes. In June, I attended a city hall in Bellflower, and a representative from Fish and Wildlife admitted that hazing only works temporarily and that many of the coyotes in Southern California are beyond this deterrent method. This expenditure is a waste of your time, your valuable time, and the city resources. All the information on that plan is already available and readily accessible on various public and free websites from the University of California and the USDA, among others. I found three of the leading experts on coyote behavior completely disagree with the Humane Society. They have a different solution for this problem. I'm going to quote Dr. Geese from the USDA and Utah State University. He calls it "oversimplifying and unproven." Dr. Baker from Calpol Pomona states there's "not scientifically based." Dr. Tim from the University of California in Hopland calls it "misleading and incorrect." Please save that money to a massive mailer, post sign alerting citizens, residents, use social media awareness that reflects reality, not just wishful thinking, like coyotes are only active during dusk and dawn, which is not true. Pets have been killed during the day, even with their owners present. I have a letter here for you, for your review, with no exaggerations, just the reality and useful tips. I also have an article that covers the legal implications of the problem of letting an interest group such as the Humane Society dictate your coyote management plan. With no science to back up hazing, you're setting up for lawsuits from citizens, who will eventually get attacked because, as you know, coyotes are attacking on sidewalks, parks, they even go inside your home now. These lawyers are very smart, and they're winning every single lawsuit against cities where coyotes have attacked humans. Please save the residents' money and focus on awareness, clearing a plan that is backed by science and not happy wishes. Dr. Niemquin, creator of the app Coyote Catcher, is a professor at UC Irvine and an active coyote researcher who is working with other cities and management plan. You may consider reaching out to her. You may consider also reaching out on other cities that are not with the ideology of the Humane Society. Their excellent wishes, God bless them, but this is a different problem that requires science, not just hopeful wishes. Thank you.
Thank you.
May I give the copies of the research papers that I'm talking about?
Anyone else like to address the city council?
Hi, my name's Barbara Short. I live at 723 North Cataract in San Dimas. I thought I'd address it now because it sounded like the meeting was going to be long, and since she started, I figured I'd continue with the coyote situation. But anyway, I lost my dog Truffles to a coyote attack. This is Truffles, sweet little puppy, sleeps in bed with us, my husband's favorite little pet. She went out one evening through our doggy door to go to the bathroom, and a coyote took her right out of our yard. That was two and a half years ago. I addressed it to you guys back then, but all I got from you guys were, "I'm sorry to hear that." Since then, there's probably been hundreds of people's pets that have been killed now. I wonder, is Barney still alive?
Yes.
He's still there, okay. My animals are now like caged in a zoo, they're like caged animals in the house. You can't let them outside. You try to teach them to use the piddle pad. Well, they don't, they didn't use piddle pads. They go outside to use the restroom. And it's very hard to change a 15-year-old's dog's way of using the bathroom to go in the house now when they were trained not to. But anyway, I'm here because I feel like as a city, and I'm a resident in your city, you have a right to protect me. I have a right to expect you to protect me and my family, and my pets are my family. This little dog is our baby. It's, I haven't got over it yet. Still two years. I go out to her little grave in our yard, and I cry. I built a whole flower garden over the top of her. It's something I go to every day, and you might say, "Oh, you weren't hurt." I am hurt. I am mentally harmed for what has happened here. I'm mentally harmed every day when I go on that neighborhood app and I hear about, "This pug was just killed." "Oh, the custodian down at Lone Hill just found a ripped apart dog. He had to put it in the trash can." It's very scary to know that you're not safe to go outside anymore, and you as a city need to protect us. These coyotes, they weren't born in the foothills. I'm so sick of hearing, "They were here first." Well, they're not. I was, I've been here 35 years, and these coyotes weren't here 35 years ago. They're born right here in our neighborhood. There's a pack right in my neighborhood, and they have four puppies. One of the puppies hangs out in my driveway now. I try to run around and scare it away, but it's just there. I find parts of rabbits dead in my yard on a daily basis. I don't want that to be my dog. And now, they haven't learned how to hunt wild animals because they're not from the foothills. Their parents have taught them to hunt our pets. And you know what? It's not illegal to hunt pets. And I'm a straightforward person, so I'm not going to beat around the bush. I think these coyotes need to be trapped and euthanized. We don't have any problem with calling the Humane Society and getting a poor dog and taking it to the Humane Society, and they're euthanized and put down, but heaven forbid if we do that to a coyote. You need to protect us and our pets and stop this and take a step forward and do more than just pass us a flyer. We've seen the flyers. We keep our trash cans closed. Our animals are trapped in the houses now. We're victims of these coyotes now, and you need to protect us and bring us so that we can have our animals here again. It's just unbelievable. These little, all right, the time is up.
Okay.
But it is legal to hunt and trap coyotes, and I think that should be done. And since we don't hunt them, because they don't have prey, we're the only prey, and since we don't hunt them, that's why the population is out of control, because no one's keeping them in check.
Thank you. Anyone else? We do have a limit of a half an hour total at this session, so please be respectful of everybody's time.
Good evening. This is Noah. I just lost him two weeks ago. Excuse me, I'm sorry. Thank you. The coyote actually came into our home. I'm sure you're familiar with it. It's been on the news. This was June 20th. We've lived, resided in San Dimas for three years. Never once in my community or anywhere else were we informed, was there any discussion whatsoever of any kind of coyotes. So I am here today for my Noah, who we lost, June 20th, in our guest room because the coyote came into our home. Three animals were attacked that evening in my community. Another one did not survive, and the coyote went through this lady's doggy door. So now they're entering our homes. I just want awareness. Something has to be done if we could. I agree with them about trapping the animals. We do it with bears, we do it with wild cats. I don't understand. It has forever changed our lives. I have a 10-month-old dog that was home with him, and thank God he survived. He's traumatized. He's urinating everywhere. It's just, it's changed our lives. And I, when I moved here, I was so excited, such a beautiful city and happy to be here. And now, we're literally talking about moving away, and I know there's coyotes everywhere. But just last night, our neighbor four down, four doors down, came up and knocked on the door and told my husband, "The coyote's out in front of your house." My husband ran and got his shoes and ran out, and he grabbed his phone. He was going to call 911, and the coyote was already gone. So obviously, they know I've got another one there, and they're coming back. So we feel like we're prisoners in our own home. It's forever changed our lives. So I'm just asking for awareness, to get the word out there, or to do something, please, for us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, hello, yes. My name is John Kiefer. I'm from, my wife and I are here from the city of Downey. We've been researching this for about four years. Every city's plan is the same, it's generic, and they've been influenced by fish and game and radical animal groups to coexist. Coyotes are a predator. They will never change their routine. They're going to continue to multiply and kill. Coyotes have babies twice a year, and they have close to four to six pups every year. There's no predator that will take out a coyote except a wolf. All of the plans are relatively the same. Quite honestly, maybe all the cities should get together, like the South Bay cities, and I think there's the Gateway cities, which include the city of Downey, and there's a term for your cities, San Gabriel cities. I would suggest pool your resources and money, file an environmental impact control report so it's bulletproof, so radical animal groups can't sue you. You have the right to do it. You can get the Department of Agriculture to start with all the county lands, the riverbeds, the freeways, et cetera. That's their land. Ask them to go and trap and kill the coyotes, at least make a start. I kind of, I read your plan, upcoming plan you're proposing. It's a good plan, but I'll leave this with you. It's the city of Downey's plan. They have three red marks on here, escalation, where they will take euthanize, kill coyotes if there's a bad situation like this dog, coyote that went through and killed this woman's dog. Most cities will go out and kill them. I'll leave this with you. My wife and I made these warning signs. You can read them if you'd like. Basically, this tells the real truth. A lot of people don't know that they can run 40 miles an hour, that they can easily jump a seven-foot fence. People feel safer in their own backyard. I think it'd be the right thing, the just thing, and the moral thing to look at this, review it, and think about, you know, passing it out to every resident in this city. People deserve to know the truth. If you start there, maybe they can take, take steps to protect their pets. That's the first place to start. Let them know they can run 40 miles an hour, they can easily jump a seven-foot fence, so that people can keep their dogs and cats safe. You have to change your lifestyle. I don't like changing my lifestyle. I feel like a prisoner, but I think the cities should really get together, like the Gateway cities, South Bay cities, the Valley city, or what, I don't know what you call it. Pool your money and resources. Study what biologists said. Say, in the late 90s, in Glendora, a little girl named Kelly Keen was playing in her parents' front yards, four years old. The father looked out the window, the coyote was dragging the daughter on the street, his daughter. The parents rushed it to the hospital, emergency hospital. After three hours of surgery, she died of a broken neck and blood loss. The people in Glendora said, "Do something now." In a short period of time, they trapped and killed 50 coyotes. For 10 years, Glendora had no problems. PETA says, "Oh, if you kill and trap coyotes, it won't be good. They'll multiply like crazy." Well, tell that to Glendora right now. There's probably lots and lots of coyotes. It will work to trap and kill them.
I'm sorry, your time is up.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Thanks for your time. Have a nice evening.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else?
My name's Rhonda. I'm from southern, southern, south of Viverdy, San Dimas, and the only reason I'm here is to speak from my heart and from my experience. I, I don't think the report that is given on management of the coyotes is strong enough or aggressive enough. It's important to be aware. Many of us are, many aren't, but I can only, the only reason I'm really here tonight is to speak for those who can't, for the small children and the elderly. It's a different way of life now for us. My dog can't go out and play and be a dog like my other two could, play frisbee and ball. Now we lock them up in the house, and they're getting fatter. When I take her for a walk, I have to take my stick, my sprays. I'm hoping I know what to do because I'll be faced with a situation I don't want to be faced with. I've been a resident for 22 years. Awesome, beautiful. I love it here, except for the last year. I am horrified because I see them on a regular basis. My house faces or backs up to three different areas: an alley, Paseo Dorado, and my street that I'm on, Camino del Sur. So I have them entering from three different locations in my eyes. I need them all over my head. I've trimmed all the brush in my yards. I've put up fences. I can't do a whole lot more because I don't own the other half of the hill. I have a problem with the city's landscaping on Paseo Alondra. Nobody comes out to trim all the brush on Paseo Alondra. It's an alley. I haven't seen any, and when they do come, they just trim along the curb. It looks like the Amazon there, perfect place for animals such as coyotes to bring up their young, to live. I can't even do a neighborhood watch because I can't see through all the heavy trees that are now bushes. Let me see, what else? Oh, when I hear the coyotes screaming at 10 o'clock, 12 o'clock, 1 o'clock, and I hear the animals they catch, and I hear them screaming, it freaks me out. I am so fearful. I'm just scared to death, and I just want something more done. Philip Tellarico has done a lot of investigations. He's my neighbor. He just lost his dog two months ago, or not two months ago, three weeks ago. He should be here tonight, but he's out of the country. Hopefully, we can readdress this on the 23rd of July. I kind of lost my thought of, but anyways, we're for more aggressive action. We want to reduce the population, and we want to live in harmony. And don't get me wrong, I love animals, I love all animals, but I want mine to have a long, healthy life because she's part of the family. I want our children to be safe. I don't want to have to go into my backyard and... Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Nick Amato. I live in San Dimas, right across from the San Dimas High School. And I have to admit, this is the cutest little thing here. If there's, I could live in a certain area and have one of these as a pet, yeah, I would. You know, it's kind of a neat little thing. But I'm here to let you know that as, as of last night, my next-door neighbor, while they're in the backyard with their family, young couple, and a little two-year-old kid, just 20 feet away, a coyote hopped a six-foot chain link fence and grabbed one of their dogs. By the time they started yelling at them and stuff, it kind of like, it let it go and hopped back over the fence, but they had to have it euthanized because it just cracked the neck and everything like this. So like I said, this was just last night. We've had seven animals in one week. Three of them were my cats. I've had cats over in the other years, gone by two or whatever. But I live in a cul-de-sac of about seven or eight homes, and I'm just telling you, the men who live and the dads who live in the neighborhood, they're talking about just bringing out, waiting for these things and coming out and shooting them, shooting them on the spot, especially if they got little kids. We got about six, seven little kids in the area, and I have seen them sitting in the yards at 2:00 in the afternoon. I've seen them stand down, two women who walked the neighborhood with their two little dogs just eight feet away. They did that to my wife one day when she was walking down to the store. Now, is that really something we want? In my theory, it's kind of like, I don't know, maybe under a circumstance or something or other, I might have a gun off to the side, just sitting there. I have baseball bats sitting off to the side in case of all of a sudden I look out a window and something's happening, but do we really have the right to do that? Do we have the right to protect ourselves when and if, maybe it's different with another animal or something, but with our kids? If somebody comes out and takes a shot at one of these things, then what will happen if all of a sudden one of those bullets takes and skips off and hits a car coming down the road? I'm just telling you, we've gone through the whole thing. I've called up the Humane Society and everything else like three, four years ago, and they basically just told me, "Tough. Deal with it, live with it." That's unreasonable as far as I'm concerned, but I'm just, like I said, I'm just letting you know, that's where my little neighborhood is, right there, and I wouldn't doubt the day comes when someone sees some coyote running the neighborhood or wherever, one of these fathers or somebody brings out a gun and starts trying to eliminate them because like other people said, they're not wild ones, they live in certain little areas. So what if all the little neighborhoods start dealing with their own problem in their own way within, and maybe over a period of time, we will eliminate them ourselves? I don't know, but that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Anyone else like to address the city council? May I ask, are there any other people here who want to talk about coyotes? Would you raise your hands? Because what, what I think we could do is we can extend this and do it all now rather than, and take all the comments regarding the coyote issue now, and then we'll, when we get to, you won't have to stay any longer because this will be the only time we deal with this. So is that okay with everybody? Okay, that's what we're going to do. So your turn.
Hi, my name is Jeff. I actually live in Covina, two blocks south of downtown. See coyotes running back and forth. On June 1st, my cat Murray was decapitated in my front lawn. That totally ruined my life. These animals have no fear of humans. They're not just, you know, out on the hillside. They're in our cities, they're hiding in the bushes, is where they're making animals. They're making more, more little coyotes that are just going to cause more problems. Couple of days after June 1st, there was a Hispanic father with his little girl. She must not be more than two. You know how little girls like to run ahead, right? I was trying to tell him, you know, "There's a coyote in the neighborhood. You got to be careful." And I couldn't, it was very hard to get that across to him, even in my broken Spanish. He may not even know Spanish. The thing is, you need the awareness to everybody, Hispanics, Anglo's, whatever. We need to make sure they're in multiple languages. Get them in every door, and this is regional. Is there anybody else from Covina? No. That's Covina. Close enough. It's a regional problem, and you guys all know that. At some point, a little kid's going to get killed, and you have, there's going to be hell to pay, and you guys know that. There's this ridiculous report about, you know, hazing them. They come back, they don't care. The only way to do this is to thin the herd. We do this with herbivores in the wild. Why aren't we doing this with predators that are on our front door? If you guys are supporting this and the hazing, you're going to be guilty of any little kid's death because you let this garbage go through and not really handle it the way it should be. There's an overpopulation of coyotes right now. We can see that by the testimony. We know that's going on. That's going to take care of. If you don't take care of it by trapping and euthanization, he's right. Neighborhoods are going to take care of themselves, period, and there's nothing you guys can do about that.
Hi, quickly, I just want to let you know that I feel like my dog is a prisoner now in our home, and I live in fear when I walk him at night. I have a coyote that's stalking me because he got in my backyard. He knows I have a dog, and he should, there's no reason he should be in my backyard. I have a small child, so I'm scared, I'm in fear all the time. This is my sister, JoJo.
We're Rhonda's neighbors too, and I have to say, everybody spoke so eloquently and just conveyed what they've gone through, and I lost my dog too. Right in front of us.
Her dog was taken while her husband had the dogs out front, and three coyotes came out from behind vons and took him right in front of him.
They challenged him. He tried, and he had to make that choice to get the other two dogs in, but we really are at the point we want to move. It's not, you can't even go out in the backyard and enjoy it anymore. It's horrible.
Our quality of life in, we love San Dimas, we love where we live, but I can't take it. My poor dog can't even be a dog.
I just am even afraid to walk on a leash, our dogs. It's very unsafe, and you're right, when the child is killed, another child's killed, it's going to be bad. And these, these, I love animals, but these coyotes have to be thinned, their herd has to be thinned, and the gentleman was correct, the wolves were their predators. They've been thinned, and the coyotes are like cockerages taking over, and it's bad. I don't even want to live here anymore. It's really kind of a, you're a prisoner in your house, they're, you're a prisoner in your house, but they're still coming in your home, killing, leaving a decapitated dog inside that poor woman's home and outside her home. It's not, it's not okay anymore. You guys have to.
We're scared.
You have to do something. It's very bad.
Good evening. My name's Jim Wallach. I'm Donna's husband, JoJo's sister or brother-in-law. This is the first, this is the first city council meeting I've ever been to, and the reason is because I love the city of San Dimas, and you guys do a great job. This council specifically has been wonderful. You guys have been proactive. Any problem we've ever had, any concern, you guys have quickly solved it for us in our neighborhood, and we love this city council, but you guys got to give me a break here. My wife is driving me crazy. I can't watch the games. I have to go out in the backyard every time the dog does. 10 o'clock at night, I'm trying to relax, I have to go on a walk with my wife. It's miserable. It is changing, like Rhonda said, it has changed our life. I used to be able to relax at home, but now I have to go outside with that dog every afternoon, every morning, and then at 10 o'clock at night, I walk him with her, and it's just bad. There was, there was a coyote in our backyard. He was there for like five minutes. We have like eight-foot walls all around us. They're, they're not afraid of humans now, so thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Jason Wallach. I live in Viverdy as well.
I live in Vivarria as well. I'm JoJo's husband. The evening that our dog was killed by three coyotes, they weren't in concert with each other. It was raining, it was just the most horrible evening. And I will tell you that the sheriffs from San Dimas did an incredible job. I think it's important for you guys to know that. Because my wife was extremely distraught, in fact, it still hurts to this day. But the two deputies that responded could not have been more kind, professional, and we truly appreciated that. So I think you guys should be aware of that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hello, my name is Dean Schlingman. I'm a San Dimas resident. About a month ago, while walking on Puente, I was stalked by two predator coyotes. About two weeks ago, my wife was walking in the same area and had the same problem. In my case, I took some action to make some noise and harass and tried to scare them away. The predators did not run, but only kind of stopped at about a 10-foot radius from me until some other people and some cars drove by and sort of distracted them. And I was able to get away without them following me anymore. It was a little nerve-wracking. I've read the regional coyote management framework proposal in its entirety, and I would urge the council to take two additional steps before considering its adoption or what have you with it. Nowhere in the plan is there a discussion about the environmental carrying capacity of San Dimas in its current status with respect to coyotes, ungulates, and related type of animals. For those unfamiliar with the term of carrying capacity, it's defined by Carnegie Mellon as the population that can be sustained at a steady state considering the resources available in the ecosystem in which it resides. To make things quick, the purpose of bringing this point up is to encourage you to conduct a root cause assessment to determine why the predators are coming into the residents. Is there not enough food available in our environment? Or is there another reason they're coming in? I bring this point to light because if the predators, if the predator population currently exceeds that carrying capacity of San Dimas and the local environment, then these predators must find food somewhere outside of their natural food source, meaning there will continue to be additional predator, pet, and predator-human interactions despite the RCMF plan to harass and dissuade these predators. If they seek these, if they seek these food sources, if they don't seek these food sources, they will starve. That's how this works. Once population counts are equal to or less than that carrying capacity, then the discussion of this cohabitation and harassment and food source elimination, it should occur at that point. But that's once they've, the carrying capacity has been established. That's something you can do with an outside resource. They can establish what the population is and what the carrying capacity is, excuse me. Second step I would urge, I'll make this quick, is to take a more, is to more heavily scrutinize the RCMF plan in an effort to give it the ability to take actions to remove predators earlier in their five-step response plan as proposed. As written, there's no mechanism to place, in place in the plan to allow for the removal of a predator until after a predator has bitten or injured a human in some way. This interaction would prompt a category-five response, which still only suggests residents receive education and training. I'll cut it there, but thank you for your time.
You can finish.
Oh, two sentences. Let's see. At this point, it's too late. An attack has occurred. I strongly encourage the council to seek much more stringent language in the RCMF plan to allow for the removal of potentially problematic predators earlier in the response plan, namely in response plan level three. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi there, my name is Camille Waggy. And I've been a resident of San Dimas for about 20 years, a little over 20 years. And I just kind of want to echo a little bit what was just said about the hazing. My encounter was early in the evening. There were two coyotes on our street. We live near Target. It's not a rural area at all. It's more urban than rural. And we had two on our street when I came home with my son and another friend. And we did attempt to use hazing techniques. I did quite a bit of research on that after we saw the first coyotes in our area, which was about five years ago. And so I knew to go in and get loud, you know, pot and a big spoon and come make myself big. And they did not react. They just stayed there and continued on their path. And it just, I'm concerned that so much of the plan involves this technique of hazing because I think that the coyotes that are here now are just not responding to those techniques like you would expect a coyote in a wild area to respond. So I just wanted to bring that idea up. My son is terrified. He doesn't want to go outside at night anymore. And, you know, it's just, we moved to San Dimas, we were more worried about the freeway noise than we were about coyotes, you know, being on our street at night. So, but the idea of hazing, while it may be effective for some coyotes, I think the ones that have taken up residence in our area between San Dimas High School and, sorry, and Arrow Highway, they're just too accustomed to us and to who we are. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hello, my name is Isabel, and I live in the city of Downey. As my husband has mentioned before, we became aware of the coyote problem in 2015. We had three small pets, and my husband had witnessed two coyotes killing the only neighborhood cat. So this prompted me and both of us to really start researching what is going on. We reached out to our city council or mayor. And we came across, which I want to share, I hope you are aware of this, Dr. Baker and Robert Timm, they are coyote biologists. They have written lots of studies and summaries of the urban coyote. It's nothing new. The problem started in the year 2000, 2004. He has some studies. They're very easy to read, very easy to understand. And Dr. Baker, in one of the studies, actually outlines the coyote behavior, the aggressive coyote behavior escalation table. And I want to link that because lots of cities are laypeople. You're not biologist. So who do you go to? You seek the help from California Department of Fish and Wildlife. But unfortunately, they are not having been very helpful. What I understand, and I've talked to them directly, is that they have this outline, which your plan is based on. Every Arcadia, West Covina, they all have the same plan. The only thing that changes is the tier response. Well, that plan, the initial plan, was created by an animal rights group, the Humane Society of the United States. It was, it's not based on any biological science. But coming from the Department of Fish and Wildlife, I think that's impressive, and it gives some credence to all this information is correct. The, oh, wow, so fast. So I want to share that with you, and I want to share that I'm very surprised that you removed the lethal removal option. It's impossible to have a successful plan without removal, as you will read the biologist's studies. I think it would be a great disservice for all these great residents you have not to have the protection that other cities have. Torrance, Downey, Covina, they all have lethal removal when they become very aggressive, not just when there's a human bite. Your plan doesn't even have a lethal removal option. It's just talking, talking, and then maybe looking at the home and seeing how the victim is, you know, done something wrong.
Please let me interrupt you for one second.
Yes, sir.
We don't have a plan. What we're talking about is a plan that's being developed by the cities in the cog and whether we're going to ultimately, they're doing all the study and whether we're ultimately going to go on to that or not. By the way, Mr. Tim is a former resident of San Dimas.
Oh, yes.
He used to be my across-the-street neighbor when he was a little boy.
If you could please reach out to him.
He liked coyotes then too. Well, I think I will.
Yes, thank you.
So I interrupted you, so I'm going to let you, you can finish.
Yes. So the Department of Fish and Wildlife has a contract with USDA Wildlife Services. And their contract specifically states, "The purpose of this agreement is to facilitate location, capture, and/or take of public safety wildlife, which includes mountain lions, black bears, coyotes." And we have a contract already in place, and it's not being used because Department of Fish and Wildlife is refusing trapping. And I think if you can please research that, and then you can, you know, input what will make this plan successful. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. If you want to stay around till the end and you think of anything else you want to say, there is another oral communications time then. I don't know how long it'll take us to go through our entire agenda, but it probably won't be a long time. So you're welcome to stay. Or if you've already said or heard all you want to about coyotes for today, the only thing that the city council is not going to take any action other than receive the report. That's all it's on the agenda for, and that's therefore what we can consider. So it's up to you, but thank you for all coming, for all of you for coming and giving us the information that you have. We've heard a lot of this before, and we understand there is a problem, as all the cities in our, along the foothills seem to understand. So if there's anyone else who would like to speak about coyotes now, you may. Anybody else want to speak about anything else to the city council during this oral communications time? Okay, hearing none, we're going to move on.
Just to verify, during, when we get to 40, we will have a public...
I think, I think we move that to here.
Okay.
So that the next time there will be any opportunity to speak about this will not be when the city council considers what action to do on the report, but it will be at the end of the session where you can, we'll have another oral communications time. Okay, so we'll go on to the consent calendar. And all the items on the consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be enacted with one motion unless there is a request for separate consideration.
Mr. Mayor...
We have had...
I'm sorry. Oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Mr. Ebner did suggest that it might be a good idea for item C for the city manager to make a comment about this because we are, this is a proposed contract with the city of Laverne for crossing guard services.
Yeah, this item is, currently, the city of San Dimas does not have any crossing guard services. There were no locations that warranted a crossing guard there. And there are certain warrants being justification for the need for a crossing guard. And that has to do with the volume of traffic, the amount of pedestrians that are crossing at a location. Last year, there was a study that was done on Walnut and Juanita intersection, next to Extran School, that the results of that study warranted a crossing guard. So without having any existing crossing guard services, we started looking at opportunities for how we would be able to provide the staffing for a crossing guard at that location. And ultimately, we looked to the city of Laverne, who has several crossing guards that are staffed by their police department. And so what's on the agenda tonight is a contract to enter into an agreement with the city of Laverne to provide crossing guard services at that location.
Thanks, Ken. And that location definitely needs something. As the mayor and I were discussing before the meeting, I used to live on the corner there, right across from the street. And basically, from Juanita to Fifth Street is one giant crosswalk, according to the parents who are taking their kids across the street there. That is not very safe. I'm hoping, first of all, it's great to have a crossing guard there because it is a busy intersection during school time. But also, I hope it encourages parents to bring their children to the crosswalk where the crossing guard is, and it would make it safer all around. So I just, I'm glad you explained that. I was just, it's a nice thing we're having the crossing guard. I just want to let the public know.
Okay. And just to reiterate, the school district and the city of San Dimas is splitting the cost of this.
Right, it would be 50-50 split.
Okay.
Okay, with that additional discussion, is there a motion to approve the consent?
Second.
We have a motion and second, any discussion? Anybody opposed? Hearing none, the items on the consent calendar are considered by, passed by a unanimous vote. And we'll now move on to other business. And the first item is a letter of opposition for Senate Bill 592.
Calling Larry Stevens for the staff report.
Senate Bill 592 by Senator Weiner. It is a bill that is what's commonly referred to as a gut and amend bill. Three weeks ago, it dealt with regulations associated with the practice of cosmetology. Mr. Senator Weiner determined that housing was a higher interest, and so he deleted the entire bill and created a substitute bill which raises issues that the city is concerned with. What this bill does is it expands the Housing Accountability Act and takes it from projects to include individual, single-family residential projects and/or additions to single-family residents. It directs the court to consider awarding compensatory damages for any Housing Accountability Act violation that the court might consider. And it allows persons, not only the applicant, but housing organizations and even potential residents of a future housing project to be litigants in the case of the compensatory damage awards. It has some very confusing language that no one completely understands that suggests even your legislative acts, such as a general plan amendment or a zone change, may be subject to the provisions of the Housing Accountability Act, which may require you to make more findings and subject you to more risk. The league has a draft letter of opposition, which we've included in your packet. We have used most of that in our own letter. We recommend that you authorize a letter of opposition to SB 592.
I think that's a great, good idea. I think we should send in a letter.
I agree.
Me too.
Is anybody opposed? Okay, that's, the consensus is to send the letter.
Isn't the hearing next week, is it this week or something?
I don't know what the hearing schedule is. It's moving pretty aggressively. Because it was a gut and amend, it had already been through the assemblies, and then it got changed. So there are hearings ongoing now, but it will end up having to go to a consensus committee because of how it was changed.
Okay, the next item is a report of the National Recreation Area.
And this item actually is an item that the council received a report on your last meeting and requested some additional information from staff to be brought back. So staff has done a little more research and has some more specific information. I think one of the areas specifically the council wanted to get information on was the specific properties in San Dimas that might be impacted by this National Recreation Area designation. So I'll call on Assistant City Manager Brad McKinney for the staff report.
Good evening, Mayor and city council members. As the city manager just said, tonight's items provide direction on legislative bills, H.R. 2215 and S. 1109, surrounding the National Recreation Area. On June 25th, 2019, the council directed staff to bring back additional details regarding the properties that would be included in the proposed National Recreation Area. This information was requested in order to provide direction to the San Gabriel Valley Council of Governments, Government Board Representative, who's going to be voting on these coming up at the July 18th board meeting. The proposed NARA maps are attached in your staff report, and they indicate that about 359 single-family homes are included in the proposed National Recreation Area. In addition, an estimated 114 potential single-family homes with future developments are included in the NRA boundaries. Details to the, to those properties are included in your staff report. I can go into more detail if you like. There's a chart in the staff report that lists those 359 and proposed, or potential 114 properties. Based on the language in the bill, private property rights would not be impacted, and the NRA would only purchase land from willing sellers. the NRA would only purchase land from willing sellers. Language supporting private property rights are specifically identified in sections of the bill which include, and it's included in your staff report, I'll go through some of these, is section 103, which states that nothing in this title alters, modifies, or diminishes any right, responsibility, power, authority, jurisdiction, or entitlement of the state political subdivision of the state or any state or local agency under any applicable federal, state, or local laws. Section 104 talks about the treatment of non-federal, federal land. And in this, nothing in this title authorized the secretary to take any action that would affect the use of any land not owned by the United States within the recreation area. Nothing affects the use or access to any non-federal lands within the recreation area. Nothing modifies any provisions of federal, state, or local law with respect to public access to or use of non-federal lands. Nothing requires any owner of non-federal lands to allow public access, including federal, state, or local government access to private property or any other non-federal land. Nothing alters any duly adopted land use regulations, approved land use plans, or any other regulatory authority of any state or local agency or unit of tribal government. Nothing creates any liability or affects any liability under any other law of any private property owners or other owners of non-federal land with respect to any person injured on the private property or other non-federal lands. Nothing conveys to the partnership any land use or other regulatory authority. Nothing shall be construed to cause any federal, state, or local regulation or permit requirement intended to apply to units of the national park system to affect the federal lands under jurisdiction of the Secretary of Defense or non-federal lands within the boundaries of the NRA. And nothing requires any local government to participate in any program administered by the secretary. And lastly, section 105 prohibits the use of eminent domain. And it specifically says, nothing in this title authorizes the use of eminent domain to acquire land or any interest in land. So with that, staff requests the council provide direction on the proposed National Recreation Area in those two bills, HR 2215 and S 1109, and provide direction to the San Gabriel Valley Governing Board Representative, who will be voting on this at the July 18th meeting. I do have Alex Fung, who is with the San Gabriel Valley COG, who is heading the, this National Recreation Area up and will be presenting this to the Governing Board on July 18th in the audience if there are any, any questions that he could answer as well.
Brad, could you, could you give us, enlighten us to what the boundaries and how many residents are involved in the properties, the cities east, east and west of us? Say Glendora, what's Laverne giving up? What's...
So when you, when you look at the map and, and there's interactive map that they've been using, it cuts through, like I said, 350 single-family residents in, in San Dimas. When you get into Laverne, there is a good amount up, up in northern part of Laverne that's included. In Clermont, it follows their, their Wilderness Park all the way up until Padua Hills, which they've included because they wanted to include Mount Baldy. So the minimal homes in Clermont. When you follow it over into Glendora, it runs along their, their wilderness area, all the way through into Azusa, when you have, I'm blanking on the name of the, the development that's...
Rose...
Up, Rose, Rosedale, that's up in there, that's included in Azusa. So there are some cities that include, include private property. Some other cities, it kind of runs along the wilderness border or the...
So, so how do they determine this arbitrary line that goes, takes in the 350-some homes in San Dimas and the golf course and a few other things? How do we get to that line? Who draws that line?
This is what was proposed by, by Judy Chu and the legislation that's been proposed. They could take a recommendation that this is opposed unless the, the boundary of the National, the NRA is amended to not include private property. I mean, that, this is, I don't know exactly, maybe Alex, you, you might know more about how this line was determined. But I know that the effort was to include the largest area to conserve land and wilderness, wilderness area.
I think I like what you just said as a matter of fact.
First off, thank you for the report. It was very detailed, thorough, and I think it answered a lot of the questions that I had. When you look at the actual area that is in the overlay, we are one of the most densely populated cities among the foothill, foothill communities that have homes wrapped up in this. 473, 359 from the existing and 114 proposed with Brusada. I don't know how Glendora and some of the other communities were so lucky as to exclude most of their private property. But I went and spoke with some people who live on San Dimas Canyon Road north of Foothill and there was a lot of nothing in your staff report regarding this particular language in the bill. Nothing this, nothing does this, nothing does that. So why even bother? I mean, I, I'm asking, why would we, why would we even consider wrapping up 473 homes in this if there's absolutely nothing that's ever gonna be impacted in private property?
That, that is good, it's a great question. I know that, I don't know why the boundary included all of these homes. It was, it was for conservation and for potential funding in the future for these type, types of wilderness lands. But as, as the legislations, as it says right now, it wouldn't affect any of these. I'm, I don't know why exactly they're included.
So I, I again digress back to what you said earlier. I would, I'm not opposed to the idea of an NRA and, and looking at the overlay, when you actually get away from the foothill communities and you start getting down into Almani and some of those other areas, they get wrapped up, but they've been densified along the riverbed area. But as it relates to San Dimas, I'm inclined to go with the idea that, you know, we oppose this unless they're willing to exclude all private property within our city limits. And they essentially could draw the line through the wilderness area, just like they did in some of the other communities. That would be my thought on this issue.
You know, four and a half years ago, we, we entertained this and we talked about it. And we, as a council, I believe, supported it, gave Dennis the, you know, our vote, I seem to remember. But yet I could not find too much that's really occurred in the last four and a half years as far as the resources. I mean, I didn't, you know, I'm sure there is something out there that they've done, but there's nothing that anybody's really talking about, you know? So I don't know, you know, I'd like to, you know, find a bathroom or something that they've done something with in the last four and a half years.
It's never been approved. What we, what we did four years ago was not approved. In fact, it was...
Congress, Congress did not pass it.
Right, we gave, we, we gave, okay, never mind.
Well, they... Sorry.
I realize that Congress never funded it.
They never passed it. They never adopted it. Judy Chu was not successful.
So the NRA was not passed, but then the National Monument was declared because the president can do that under the Antiquities Act.
Yeah, right, he declared its home.
That's the monument. So I think here, there's gonna be more of, I saw visitors, some welcoming signs or ways of, you know...
Within, a lot of it has occurred with the National Monument, but this is, this is a National Recreation Area, which is different than the National Monument.
Right.
My recommendation would be that we approve this, but we let it be known and we suggest that the COG write a letter saying that private property should be taken out.
I just had a couple of questions before we...
That's just my opinion.
So I noticed that like the golf course and the Horsehead Canyon Park are included. Would this, and those are city-owned properties, is the city prevented from changing the use or building things on there or is the golf course gonna be, be restricted at all from developing whatever they want to do?
No, in, in the, in the legislation, it, private property and city, city-owned property is exempt from any of the NRA, they're protected. And this legislation, that's right here.
But, and so the, and so like there, there are a lot of homes, like say up along Terre Bone and a bunch of houses. It basically seems to be drawn with that water course that comes down from, from, between Laverne, you know, right off San Dimas Canyon to the east and it continues and everything north of that is included. So if somebody owns a home on, on Terre Bone, are they gonna be restricted from adding on to the home, building a swimming pool, anything like that?
Everything that's in the legislation said, no, the private, private rights are not touched and they don't have to allow access to anybody. Nothing would change on, regarding the private property or land use.
And as of the moment, the rules of the, of the House of Representatives does not permit gut and amend.
Right, good point. The other question I had was, so there's a lot of National Recreation Areas around the, around the country and have the, the laws authorizing those been amended, do you know of any, at any point where they would maybe take some of that restrictive language out just because, you know, it would, it would suit their purposes?
I, I don't have that answer and Alex, could you maybe help me with that?
Yes, sir.
Will you come up to the, would you come to the podium, please? Alex, Alex might have more information on that history than I.
I mean, because, and, and the whole point of that is that the, one of the worries of a lot of people are that, you know, you draw a line around something and right now it has all this great language to prohibit the federal government or some other authority from doing something. But then, you know, they're 2,500 miles away in Washington and who knows what might happen next.
Right, and it's one of the, the COG, again, good evening everyone, my name's Alex, I'm from the San Gabriel Valley Council of Governments. And the COG just wants to reassure that like really we take, our staff takes a neutral stance on this issue and we're really here to support the cities on whatever you guys think is best. And like Brad has mentioned before, if the city would like to take an action to oppose unless amended or whether if it's to support and then write a letter, the COG is completely supportive of whatever the city would like. In regards to your question, every National Recreation Area was designated differently. So I'm sure that there's some, some other, I guess, methods that can, I guess, convey your concerns to the Congresswoman or the Senator. Hopefully that answers your question.
Okay, I, I don't think, it sounds like we don't know.
We don't know about other National Recreation Areas and if their legislation or rules...
But as it's, as you said in your report, which is very good, this has no bearing or influence or requirements on private property whatsoever. In fact, this strengthens eminent domain, because it says you cannot use it. Right now, you can use it.
Correct.
Someone could go up there in the foothills if someone owns property and do eminent domain if they're gonna use it for a governmental purpose. With this passes, you're not able to do that.
If that's for this legislative group, who's to say in the future that a different legislative group doesn't decide to affect it? So if we just say, we're not gonna do it unless they, they take our, our private residents out completely, I just see that being a better way to do it than, you know, that, we don't want any of our private properties touched with this.
Yeah, I, I actually...
The reality of this is, we're not even rearranging the deck chairs on the Titanic. They don't care one bit. This is gonna be decided in Washington, it isn't gonna be decided here. It's gonna be whether Judy Chu can get it through and then whether the Republican Senate will even consider it. And I'd say she might get it through, but whether the House, the Republican Senate will consider it, I'd say that's, that's very unlikely. The, the big concern has been up until the time she did this, that the, that the National Monument status would be revoked because that's a presidential action to create it. Theoretically, it could be to eliminate it. So it's, I think it's, it's also apparently, this is 21 to 1 preliminary that the, the COG favored this, so...
Alex, I'd be curious, can you convince us why? I mean, you hear the word protected, 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 but what are you protecting? I mean, if there's nothing, why do our citizens, our, our private property owners have to be protected? From what? I mean, it's, it's, it's almost, why, I mean, there's all this nothing, 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 doesn't do anything to anybody. So then why, why push this?
Are you asking me as a staff member of the COG or are you asking me as a resident of the San Gabriel Valley?
Well, I think, let's, let's, let's do one, one or the other. I, either, give me both.
I think one of the points that we can point out on why some of our members or our member cities are looking into this is that then there's a difference between a National Monument, which exists in the San Gabriel Mountains right now, versus a National Recreation Area. And that a National Recreation Area can receive a lot more federal funding in regards to hiring rangers, providing funding to establish trails and the facilities to protect the areas within that destination. Versus a National Monument, very much is more of like a designation that does not bring much of the benefits as, like a National Recreation Area. And we do hear a lot of the points that some of our cities are concerned about having private properties within the region. And this was a point that was discussed at our previous governing board meeting, so...
What about, is that as a resident or is that the COG answer?
As a COG answer?
All right, what's your answer?
As, as my answer, as a resident, and, well, I don't live in the City of San Dimas, I live in the City of Monterey Park. But I believe my answer as a resident would pretty much be the same. I know that there's much of the, I personally go hike a lot and a lot of the areas within the San Gabriel Mountains are not protected, such as the Eden Canyon, which I frequent a lot with my, with my girlfriend. And a lot of the areas are vandalized in this because they don't have enough rangers. And I believe that there definitely can be more resources allocated. But I'm sure there's also many other ways too, aside from having a National Recreation Area, if that answers your question.
I've heard other cities like Monrovia have expressed concern over this as well?
Yes, sir, yeah.
Yep, like to the point that they don't want to be involved in it, is that true?
That was a point that was brought at the previous governing board meeting.
Okay.
Let me explain something. If you talk to the people that live in the foothills of San Dimas, their main concern is development above them. We even have people in the audience that are concerned about development above them. And what this does is that if, if you're in a National Recreation Area, it makes it easier to get conservancies to come in and buy the property and keep it open space. So that's one of the, the big, that's the big advantage of, of this, of a National Recreation Area. It makes it easier for conservancies to come in and purchase the property.
I appreciate...
But this is open space property. This isn't property with houses on it or whatever.
Right, and I, and I appreciate that and I have a large base up in that area, so I am familiar with some of the concerns up there. I would move that we oppose this for the purposes of the upcoming vote unless all private property within the City of San Dimas is amended to be excluded from the project. So I'm, I'm okay with the NRA excluding, I'm okay with the NRA as long as it excludes all private property within the city, both existing and proposed. The 114 plus the 359.
I'll second that.
But let me ask a question of the, of the maker of the motion. So Ryan, you've, you've probably seen this map with all the blue on it.
Yep.
The blue is the National Recreation Area that's not part, I don't think, that's the part that's not owned by the federal government if I'm...
No, that's the expansion.
Oh, the expansion from the monument, okay.
The green is the monument and the blue is where we're looking to expand.
Okay, so...
Some of the expansion part though is part of the national forest.
The NRA portion.
So those parts, there are parts in that blue that are canyons, open space and that kind of thing, and they're in private ownership. But they're in the foothills, they're above Terre Bone or wherever, there's, there's no development there now. Are you opposed, as Dennis said, if, if it's got the National Recreation Area designation, it makes it easier. There's no, nothing, a private property owner does not have to sell their property at all. And they could literally have a one acre up there and, and, you know, not sell it, even if everything else was sold. But it gives the resources to possibly buy that land and put it in a concern, or buy an easement, but one way or another to prevent development from, in that area. I mean, it's not developed now, but it just makes it easier for that. So I'm just wondering if you might want to modify your motion to exclude, you know, the Wildwood and the Terre Bone and those areas and the people you were talking to that have the homes on the, like the east side of San Dimas Canyon. You put all this other stuff into it though. The whole idea of the National Recreation Area is a good idea. If you look at the math, it has the, some wild rivers that are designated, it has some wilderness areas that are designated. And as Mr. Fung pointed out, there he is, as he pointed out, you know, it just, and Dennis, there's, gives a lot more... if, if he, as he pointed out, you know, it just, and Dennis, there's, gives a lot more funding for rangers, trail building, all this kind of stuff that helps those people who like to go in the outdoor, and I think most of us do, to, to have a safe, I mean, I was just talking to, um, you know, a member of the family that, you know, hiked from the East Fork all the way to Mount Baldy and back because they just felt that was a great hike to go on. But, and they were talking about how, you know, the trails were very minimal and all that kind of stuff, but, so the, the whole idea, the national recreation area is a great idea and I think that areas that are not developed should be included so that they could possibly be, be preserved as open space.
Judge, I, I would hope that we would vote down, excuse me, but your, your motion and that you allow me to vote in favor of this at this, at the meeting and also to propose that the COG work to take private property out of the national recreation, not private property, private residences out, out of the national, uh, recreation area.
Well, to John's, uh, question, so what you're trying to say is.
Kind of like Dennis' thing.
So exclude, exclude all of the existing single-family homes as well as the 114 proposed homes in Brusada?
True.
And then anything that is not currently developed but privately owned, um, that's what you're, you're asking, if there would be an amendment to include undeveloped private property within the zone.
That would be a suggestion, yes, if, I mean, I think that's kind of where Dennis was going also, I.
Yeah, but it's important that we can approve the, the way it stands now and then try to change it, have the COG try to change it.
I understand that.
I realize mass is, property is, is, is a big, a big difference, but, but what makes me who owns a house, again, I don't, owns a house in, in the middle of a project, my, my little chunk of the world versus the guy that owns 50 acres or 100 acres up there? What makes that guy's property, you know, right, different than mine? I own, I own this, this guy owns 50, so we're penalizing this guy if we're, if it's looked that way. We're penalizing him.
You're, you're not penalizing, so for example, our zone allows in the foothills, no matter how the, the terrain is, no matter what it is, if you've got a piece of property, you're allowed one unit on that property. You're allowed more perhaps if you've got different kind of property and it's bigger. So we're not penalizing anybody. Right now, even if it's in the national recreation area, if the city of San Dimas approves a project up there, we, we don't lose any authority to do that. We, we don't lose any authority. It's just that with the federal government, first of all, the mayor's right, this probably isn't going to pass because the Senate is probably not going to pass it, but assume it did, we would have a lot of benefits and I don't think we really have any of the, of the detriments that, that we're talking about personally. So I would, you know, Brian, respectfully, I, I know where you're coming from and I appreciate your willing to be flexible on it, but I'd rather authorize, and I know your motion's on the floor and it has a second, so we can get a vote on it, but I would, I would rather.
Has a second.
I think it did have a second. And I'd rather authorize Dennis to vote for it and the COG to work for exactly the goals we've been talking about, keeping all the developed property and the soon to be developed in Brusada out of it.
I have to agree with Emmett. I, I think that private property is private property and, uh, I can't see devaluating, devaluing somebody else's property, whether it's developed or not, so, um, maybe I'll ask the mayor to call the question.
I really don't see that they're devaluing the, the property because it, all of the things that they're doing, the only thing that's different is if, if a property is not in the recreation area, it is subject eminent domain by the federal government. If it is in, it is not.
I, I think I can read the tea leaves, but I, I'm going to stay with my second and, but I'm going to hope that Dennis goes forward after this vote and voices the concerns to the COG.
Don't give up hope yet, Emmett, it's not over.
I can read the tea leaves.
Okay, anybody want to say anything more before we vote?
No.
All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no.
No.
No. Fails by a vote of two to three.
Is there a substitute motion, Dennis?
Well, I, I, we actually don't need a motion.
No.
But I'll make a motion that, uh, you give me the power to vote in favor of this at the COG meeting on July 18th.
I think you just had it.
And you'll bring your.
And I'll bring up the idea that we're concerned about houses that are in the area and they should be taken out.
Private, private property rights.
Private property rights.
Is it private property or is it developed?
Developed private property.
Yes, okay.
Well, I'm going to oppose that because I think private property is private property, so.
I, I agree, I agree, so I'll vote.
And I'll, and I'll just point out one additional thing is that this actually might make some people's property more valuable because.
It will make their property more valuable.
If you've got property that's hard to develop and you've got to build a two-mile road up and down canyons to get to it, to do the development, using San Dimas standards of building roads and everything else, it's going to be really hard to develop that property. Somebody comes along, conservancy or whatever, with some money to buy that property, you're now able to sell it, if, if you want to, and, uh, I, I think it actually makes it more possible.
I can't imagine why they'd want to buy it. If it can't be developed, why would, why would they want to buy it?
Well, truthfully, it's already difficult to develop in this city, so.
They have, they, they have the, I mean, it's property that you have to, property that's up on those hills, if people own a little area, there is no reason that anybody would want to buy that because it's not going to be developed regardless, unless somebody who's a hell of a fan.
I think you, was that a motion that you made?
Your motion.
I'll second that motion.
I'm, I'm not voting in favor of this motion and the reason I'm not voting in favor of it is I don't like that deals where we put in the private property, all that. I think my, the motion I would support is to let Dennis go and vote whatever he feels is the right way to vote.
Okay, I'll, I'll change my motion to that.
Is that acceptable to you, John?
Let me count. I will second that motion.
Okay, any more discussion? Okay, everybody in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no.
No.
Carries by a vote of three to two.
And for the record, the council members voting no, or councilman P N and council members voting aye.
Okay, the next item.
I will bring up the idea that the council is concerned about existing development being in this area.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I think, why did they bring, why, and of course, she will never explain it.
No, I think someone just drew the line.
Why did they bring it down to take in the developed part of San Dimas, although if you go to Glendora, it also takes in all of the, uh, the Gordon Highlands and, uh, and all of that. Everything that's up there is in it too. It's, it's not, we just don't have that part of the, of the full blue, big blue map.
I got it figured out. They used a real wide marker.
Yes, yes, but I think, you know, I wouldn't want to bet my last nickel, but my next-to-last is going nowhere.
If it got past the Senate, they still got to get past the President.
Yeah, right. Uh, okay, we're next, next item is a discussion on the council dais seating arrangement. Yes, we're ready.
Just as a way of background, Mayor Protem Vienna requested this item be placed on the agenda and there was concurrence with at least one other council member to bring it forward. Um, and the discussion, from what we understand, is the, the seating arrangement of the positions on the dais. And just as background, the configuration of the dais as far as seven seats, um, is the original configuration of, um, the dais itself. When City Hall was renovated a few years ago, that didn't change. As far as our recollection, uh, the seating arrangement with the city manager flanked to the right of the mayor and the city attorney flanked to the left of the mayor has always been the seating arrangement, but, um, that's always, you know, subject to consideration and discussion. Uh, after the item was brought forward, uh, the city clerk, um, did a listserv, survey, uh, across, the city clerk's listserv received about 23 responses across cities across California. Uh, there weren't a lot of local cities that responded, so we reached out and specifically, um, surveyed a few of, of cities. And basically, the, the results are, there really isn't a norm or a, a standard. Uh, there are some cities that have, uh, the seating configuration that we do, there are a number others that don't have that, they have different seating arrangements. So staffs, um, does not have a recommendation, uh, so it's the pleasure of the council if you would like to consider, uh, a different seating arrangement for the dais.
Didn't I, did I, if I read the material that you gave us correctly, most cities have at least seven people up here.
Uh, it really is all over because some of them have districts and so they have more seating than, than seven. It's, it's really, um, like I said, there's really no norm.
No norm.
Yeah.
Okay, just a quick question on, on the addition that we received today. When we look at Montclair, Upland, you, you say, uh, city manager left, so does that mean they're on the dais left and right?
That's our understanding, yeah.
Okay, and the city manager, like in Upland, they're both left of the council, but they're still on the dais.
Right, so it would be five council members and then the two, city, uh, city manager and city attorney on one side.
Okay.
I do have a couple of things, so.
Give them on some. Was the, so Brad, you sent out a, the email today, was, did you put the hard copy in our box or, or was it up here on the dais?
Yeah, there should be, there's a copy up on the dais.
Oh, it's in this packet right here?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So if counsel indulge me for just a few minutes.
Here's a copy of it.
I don't know. Look, look at the TV. All right, there's a lot to be said about imagery. For example, if I wore a red tie tonight, I'd be in a power play kind of mood because that's what symbolism would say. If I went with a blue tie, trying to be a little bit softer. I went both colors tonight because I don't know how this is going to go, so I could go either way. But, you know, I don't know when the last time anybody on that dais stood here, but for me, it was about 26, 27 months ago before I was elected. And I know what it's like to stand here and have problems in my community that I'm still dealing with and to address this body and to have the mayor flanked by the city attorney and the city manager and then the council up there just looking at you. Camera guy, go to the dais shot. And you see, you literally see every.
Thank you.
Everybody just standing there. I wish there was an angle for you to see it from here, other than just standing here. So when people come up to speak, there's the idea, right? And, and I, I did a whole bunch of homework about this because I knew this was going to be an interesting discussion. You know, the dictionary, the dais, arrays platform as at the front of the room, for elector and throne, seats of honor, et cetera, um, that's what that is. And, um, to the city attorney, do you sit on the dais in any other city you're serving right now? Thank you. So you look at that and there's, I, I imagine there's a reason for that. My research usually is because we want independence. The city attorney has his duty to be kind of independent from the governing body, so he represents the city and the city manager as well. But some of the criticism that you always hear is, well, you look at it and the symbolism is we're all in bed together. Uh, you have the mayor in the middle, arguably could be made a strong mayor by some who have that discussion, the thought process. You have the city manager and the city attorney insulated by two other council members. So just to the point of the city manager, the International City Managers Association Code of Ethics, which is one of the associations that deals with this, has a few different things. And, uh, I actually do read about our local government quite a bit, so this is my one textbook. Being, number three, being dedicated to the highest ideals of honor and integrity in all public and personal relationships in order that the member, which would be the city manager, may merit the respect and confidence of the elected officials, of other officials and employees and of the public. Number four, serve the best interests of the people. And number seven, refrain from all political activities which undermine public confidence in professional administrators. There's guidelines for each one of those points that I've read from the Code of Ethics, but the bottom line is, when you sit here, and I'm not saying, because Ken just recently got on board, so it's not Ken, and I talked to him about this, this isn't about Ken Durant, but when you sit here as someone who's having a public hearing or you're having a problem with the city and you have the city manager and the city attorney sitting up there trying to address the body in which they voted, I stand before you representing the eyes of the people who put us into office and they literally stand here and look at us for guidance to solve a coyote problem, to solve all kinds of things. And it just optically looks like we are all one body. Now, my original thought was tonight, my goal was to say, you know, the city manager and the city attorney probably should sit where Hector and where Brad are because I think they miss a lot of the different cues that go on from council. Uh, I don't think they have the opportunity to really see what's going on, both on our side of the fence, um, and on theirs. And, uh, that was my original thought process. However, in doing more research about this issue, uh, the International City County Managers Association, in an article on March 9th, a city manager actually wrote a pretty lengthy article about the different constructions of the different dais. And what was interesting and kind of swayed my thought on this a little bit, um, is that the chambers of today are becoming more inclusive. They're bringing staff to the table and they're having everyone physically be present to be part of the discussion. And so after thinking about the circular design of this, which just the architecture alone, the circle is supposed to represent, symbolize inclusion, that literally, and I didn't talk to the architect, but I'm guessing based off of my research, we're supposed to be inviting the public to come up to this podium to talk. We have staff here almost in a circular, so we can continue to talk to them. So this arrangement, which is the dais of the future apparently, um, but we can go with the half, talks about some advantages. A mostly round table is more conducive to council discussion. Number one, uh, that, number two, having staff physically at the table reinforces the idea that the staff and the council members are on the same team. The dais, however, uh, can be designed to make a visual distinction between elected officials, staff and presenters, which is appropriate since it's the governing board that votes and makes the ultimate decision. When residents, number three, when residents are invited to address the council, they move into the inner circle, that's in that design, but they would come here, which is less intimidating and more welcome. It symbolizes that the council is inviting the speaker into the circle. And so after much thought about what to achieve tonight, oh, and the other thing, because I mentioned this when we talked about it before, was the, the, the existing configuration, I mentioned Brown Act issues last time. And that's not to single any member of us out, but the existing design lends itself to allow a council member, any one of us, to lean over and ask questions that sometimes otherwise should be things that we're voicing through the microphone. And that was my thought when looking at this, um, is how can we change the configuration of the dais to minimize the, the leaning to, to address the perceptual issues of some members of this community, um, but also to establish that cohesive framework between staff and the council. So my thought, and thank you for indulging me, my thought on this particular issue is I would love to see the city manager and the city attorney take the positions that Councilman Bedar and I have, which would put them on the outside, facing the council so we can all see them, and then have each one of us have Councilman Bedar and I, all of us shift in one closer to the mayor. So when citizens come up to address the council, the mayor's front and center, the council to his right and left, and then the staff are on the outskirts. And that's all I got, so thank you for listening. And I hope you like my ties, these are my favorite ties.
Well, I'll, I'll start off. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, will you?
Go ahead.
Want to jump in here? Um, the one thing I noticed from, um, some of the, from the survey i- is that in, in general, it seems that the city manager and city attorney are up on the dais, it seems, with the city council. In most of the configurations, the majority anyway, there's seven. Sometimes there's a city clerk who joins us up here on the, uh, no, she doesn't want to come up here though. So, uh, but, but there's, uh, seven or eight is, is, is the rule, it seems. There are sometimes less and sometimes in. There are sometimes less, and sometimes in cramped quarters, they'll have just the city council up there. It seems that mostly when it's a smaller chamber, it'll have just the five city council members. So it's good to point out that, you know, the city council hires two people to run the, two people that we can hire, the city manager and the city attorney. They are sort of the, you know, the first among equals, I guess you might say, but, so they deserve, I think, a place up here and we do need their advice and their, you know, we turn things over to the city manager to call on somebody else all the time, so I believe they should be up here. Whether they're on the ends, that's, I can see your point, and that makes a good point, that having the decision makers all together, five in a row, might not be a bad idea. I'm, I'm willing to go that way or leave it as is. I notice that San Dimas seems to be in the, our configuration is the majority, or not the majority, but the plurality, they're more like us than anyone else, it seems.
Well, to survey.
Two out of eight locally, nine out of twenty-three in other areas. So I mean, I'd say we're the minority in the immediate vicinity and nine out of twenty-three, I mean, that.
Right, 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 yeah.
So it does exist out there, is I guess the point, is that there are places that have it, but it's not the majority.
Right. What I meant was that of all the configurations, the one that gets, is the most is, is ours. I mean, there's other ones too that are, you know, close to it. Anyway, but no, as I say, I'm, you know, I'm good either way, actually. Those are my thoughts.
Thank you.
It is very helpful to the person presiding to have the city attorney, because if he, if there's a procedural kind of issue, you have a chance to talk to the city attorney. It's also helpful to have the city manager. I think that the way we do it, the way we've been doing it since they built the city hall works very well and I don't see any point changing it just to be changing it.
I don't think it's just to be changing it, Mayor, but I understand.
But I certainly, since you mentioned the Brown Act, it is definitely a violation of the Brown Act for a city council member to receive a text message or an email that might have anything to do with what's going on in the city council.
Yep.
That is more likely to happen than unless you and John want to have conversations. So I think, you know, this is not a Brown Act issue, it's the conduct on the, on the dais that could create a Brown Act issue if there ever is one. I think the way we have it works very efficiently and I would not be in favor of changing it.
You know, having, in the last twelve years, I've had numerous times that somebody's mentioned the fact to me that, of the configuration of the dais. Quite honestly, even when they were speaking to me about it, I really wasn't giving it a lot of thought because this is the way, say, I grew up, this is the way it is. I am definitely not in favor of moving the city attorney and the city manager down into the pit, not to diminish the staff in any way, shape, or form, but the reality is that I, I think it's good that they're up here. I do agree that if they're sitting on either end, they could still be involved. I understand what Kurt says, is saying, but the one thing I will not do is, I will not vote to put them down in the, in with the rest of the staff and not, not to decimate the staff, but I just think that them being up here, I'm trying to think, the cameraman up there, you know, we're asking them questions and they're talking, I think the camera guy, you know, going from left to right, I see him going crazy, but the crew. Question is, I would be supportive of them moving to either end or I would, could buy off on they staying where they're at, but not in the pit.
Well.
Sorry about the pit.
I can understand what the mayor is saying where it's convened for him to have these gentlemen on either side. That to me makes a lot of sense. I'm happy the way it is now, I don't see any reason to change it. But I agree, we don't want them down there in the pit.
Well, I, I would move, I would move then to reassign the seating on the dais to move the city manager to the position I currently sit in, the city attorney currently to the position that Councilman Bedar sits in, and then to have all the other council members move inward, one seat closer towards the mayor.
Yeah, I'm going to second the motion because I, I know where this is going also. So I'm going to second that motion, but because somebody thinks there should be a change, and I'm not sure if it's just for the good of change, but I also looked around at the other cities in our region that have that seven and that's, they're either on, on either side or and/or they're immediately to the left or immediately to the right on the seven configuration. And this, in the councils that I went and visited to find out, so I don't, I don't have a problem with that, so I'm going to second the motion.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and second. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion?
I'm going to go ahead and, go ahead and stick with the way we have it. I did want to take the opportunity to say that I did log on to my phone because I didn't see the hard copy of the, of the printout. And that's, if, if that was maybe what the reference was to.
That was not the reference.
I was logging to my phone to find the copy online, which we had been sent earlier today. But that is sometimes what, what is going on with the phones, just to say. But I, I'm going to, I'm going to vote against the motion, but I'm, I'm open to it and maybe when we, when we reorganize in March, we might want to think about something, you know, so don't.
Excuse me, I can't hear a word you're saying. When you're talking about reorganizing what?
After the next election.
After the next election?
Yeah.
Why, you leaving?
I said, "we."
Were you leaving?
I said, "when we reorganize next, next." I'm, I'm just thinking, I'll, I'll think about it, I'm open to it, I'm going to stick with the way it is right now and so.
I'll just add one comment. After this vote is done, the next city council meeting we have and for the remainder of my term, I will sit where Hector sits. That is going to be the way this visualization and off balance approach is going to play out for me because quite literally, two out of eight cities have their city attorney and city manager sitting on the outskirts with the governing body, making us the minority. And nine out of twenty-three have other configurations or have the same configuration, which means the majority of them do not. So I perceive the dais as off balance and I respect the electorate and their wishes and their will for all of us who sit up here. And that's going to be it, so tuning in from down there, from here on out, in the pit with the rest of staff. Because as off balanced as that will look, is as off balanced as this looks. But.
Let's call the question.
All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Oh, aye.
Aye.
Oh, hell.
Those opposed say no.
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 And I just would like to add. I would just like to add, I'm not sitting down there.
Oh, that's fine.
Okay, but, but I would hope that after this, after this settles down, that you would consider, reconsider, because I think it's important that they see all seven of us up here, if they're going to be here, I just wish that you would consider.
Yeah, I think I'm going to consider making a run in the next election, that's what I may consider, but we'll, we'll see, that's a whole other conversation.
Not what I was trying to get to.
I know, I know.
I just, I just think that we should, we should be smart enough and be adult enough to be able to be responsible.
Well, you know, this could become ridiculous. I've been on the council for twenty-eight years and no one has ever mentioned that there's a problem up here. And I've been in, active in the community and I don't see any problem whatsoever. And I think it's just fine the way it is. If we vote to change it, that's fine, I'll go along with it, but I think that whatever the council says, we should abide by it. And I think your best bet is to stay up here, but that's up to you. I mean, you add a lot to this and it's important for people to see the council together, I think. But that's a decision you have to make.
Very well.
For the record, Mr. Mayor, in that motion, the council members voting no, we're Vienna and Bedar. Or the council members voting yes, we're Vienna and Bedar.
Yes. Okay. Now we're to the coyote management program. What is the recommendation of staff?
Just as a, as a, some clarification, there were a lot of comments that were made under oral communications and I think there, and we, we received some emails and, and saw some, some posts that were on social media and I think there, among some people, there may have been misinformation as far as what the item was that's on the agenda tonight. The item on the agenda tonight was just an informational background as far as a coyote, a regional coyote management program that the San Gabriel Valley Cog and a number of cities that are part of that organization have been working on over the last six months to put together a, a, a program that if adopted by the cog, could be individually adopted by any of the cities in the organization. And there were several speakers who made comments about a regional approach and referenced actually some other cogs that have adopted regional plans, and that's the intent of what this effort has been for the last several months. There is a component that if this is approved by the cog, there may be an opportunity for the cog to take a lead role in the education and implementation elements of this program. And if there are individual cities that would like to take advantage of that, there is an opportunity for them to participate with a financial contribution. And so one of the items that we were presenting to, planning on presenting to you tonight was the, the cog board is looking for not a binding commitment for cities to participate in the implementation, but if there's interest in, by cities. So by no means, this is not a, a plan that the city was planning on adopting tonight. If it's something that the cog approves, again, staff's intention would have been to bring this back at a future date for more detailed discussion regarding the elements of the plan. So I think with that, I think Assistant City Manager Brad McKinney has kind of put together an overview of the program and I think that, I'll ask him just to kind of give just a brief summary of some of the key points of that and then have any feedback from, from the city council. So, Brad?
Thank you. Ken, Mayor and City Council, Ken did a great job of summarizing the, kind of background of where the cog got to today. Part of the, the task force that the cog worked with was city staff, the California Department of Fish and Wildlife, Assembly Member Ed Chow's office, University of California Agriculture and Natural Resources, local humane societies, were all involved in establishing this, this framework that the cog is, is going to propose for the region. The plan, as, as, as City Manager mentioned, serves as kind of a, a plan that member agencies can adopt to have a comprehensive one voice for the cog when dealing with Department of Fish and Wildlife or the county. So everybody is speaking the same language and addressing coyotes in the same way. The plan includes multiple different facets. I'll kind of go through the plan. To begin with, it talks about coyote management strategies and the strategy for managing coyotes is based on balance, respect and protection of wildlife without compromising public safety. The main strategy is a multi-focused approach consisting of public education, enforcement, and reporting. The plan includes information on coyote attractant, attractants, which a lot of the community addressed today, which includes food that is either intentional or unintentionally left out, water, big, especially during the drought and dry weather, pools, lakes, pet dishes all are attracted to coyotes, shelter, a lot of the parks, green belts, open spaces, golf courses, building sheds, increased amount and types of coverage that coyotes are looking for in urban environments. Unattended pets, you know, coyotes primarily eat small mammals such as mice and rats, however they are preying on slightly larger mammals such as rabbits and groundhogs, which a lot of, a lot of pets are the same size. And feral cats, while residents feed feral cats, it's often, the coyotes aren't going after the cats, they know there's food there, so the cats are continually coming, so they're either going after the food or the feral cats that are, that are in the area. A lot of the community talked about hazing and behavior changes and some coyotes have become too comfortable in the proximity of humans. So we have, the plan describes different methods to safely coexist and modify the behaviors of the coyotes, making them uncomfortable and having the attractant, I keep stumbling on the word, attractants in the area where that's water, food, shelter. And the goal of hazing is that it's not economically or ecologically efficient to eradicate coyotes from the urban ecosystem. The hazing is part of a long-term plan to both live in, in the area safely together. Part of the plan also includes a training program that the cog's encouraging member agencies to partner with experts with the California Department of Fish and Wildlife, animal service organizations, the county. Part of this education that's included in the plan is the basic coyote information that they do run forty miles an hour, that, that basic information so people are prepared, which we heard earlier. Normal, healthy versus abnormal, unhealthy coyote behavior, seasonal behavior, the pup season, when they're, when they're mating, when they're, when they're breeding, when they're, they're going away from their den to look for food for, for their pups, when their pups are leaving the den, so it describes all those different seasons. Appropriate responses to encourage wildlife when dealing with wildlife. Human health, public and pet safety tips are included in the plan. And as I mentioned, hazing methods. Also included in the plan is the enforcement of feeding wildlife. The act of feeding wildlife can attract coyotes and their prey to the area and lead to likelihood of creating habitual coyotes and increased coyote-human interactions. California law prohibits the feeding of wildlife and local police and sheriff need to be involved in, in strictly enforcing those laws. It includes a coyote safety response plan, kind of a tiered plan that, that you heard earlier, that's a five-tiered plan based on different classification of human and coyote interaction. It also includes the coyote reporting, the, the California coyote catcher, so they can, they can map out where there are issues in different communities or, or larger populations of coyotes. Yard area checklist, which is, is available and I'm sure a lot of the community knows about how to, to maintain their larth, their, the food that's left out, the landscaping, the structures, but that's important stuff that a lot of people might not know about. Certain people might, certain people might not. So that includes the plan that, I can go into more detail on any aspects of that. That's what the, the cog is going to be presenting to the governing board to have a regional kind of plan for, for everybody to have the same message. The different tiered systems can, can be a little bit tailored towards, towards the situation as we heard before on, on when you get California fish and wildlife involved and when there is an attack and you bring somebody in to address the aggressive coyote. The other side of what Ken mentioned was the implementation plan and the possibility of the cog providing coyote management services on behalf of the agencies. Under this, the cog would serve as the umbrella organization that's responsible for public outreach, education, promoting effective human-coyote conflict mitigation strategies, supporting the wildlife and reporting a responsive mechanism to, to track the coyotes. This plan would, if, if the cities are interested and the cog has asked if any cities are interested, is, is ten thousand dollars a year. What that would include is town hall and community meetings, coyote management workshops and conflict training, youth outreach and education programs, mailers and social media that would go out to the entire community, website, coyote incident reporting system that they would be tracking where the coyotes are in the region, and a coyote reporting hotline. They are, the cog is asking if you are interested, there's a two-year commitment to, to this. And that plan, this implementation plan along with the, the management plan is what's being presented to the cog on July eighteenth. So that, that concludes my report and I'm happy to answer any questions. And Alex Fung from the cog is also here, he is also the one that's going to be presenting this to the cog governing board.
You know, I, I think based on the comments made by people here tonight, we may have to look that the coyote problem is farther that the coyote problem is farther down that line than we've been thinking. And that maybe we do have to start really taking a look at whether we have to do that we, it's, we're a little late in the game to be doing community meetings, outreach, and those kind of things, and we need to see if we needed, what else can be done that might be more effective. When the coyotes are challenging people in their backyards, as people have testified here to, tonight, that's a pretty difficult situation, and when they don't haze very well, I, I think that maybe we need to, to contact or suggest that the COG contacts Robert Tim and the other person who was named, and because I think Robert Tim and, I don't know the other person, but I think he's, you know, spent his whole life working on coyotes, more or less, which I always thought was kind of a wasted life, but nevertheless. But I think we, we need to start, the people, it is true, I think the people who pointed out that there's a certain bias in this report to living together. Maybe some of these we have, and maybe it's only San Dimas, but maybe we have a problem that's bigger than being able to live together anymore. And that we need to, we need to be asking the COG or we need to do it ourselves to take a look to see what the next steps could be and what we ought to do to, to look into that, because it, the behavior being described is not, hazing doesn't do a lot. And I, I just, my own times when I've seen the coyotes jogging down the street, they don't seem to take too much care. A number of years ago, some coyotes or maybe some dogs killed my daughter's big monstrous fluffy cat, and that was a traumatic experience, and that was right in front of our house. So I think we, unless we totally discount everything that was said to us tonight by the people who came, this problem may be bigger and maybe farther along than this, this plan that they're talking about contemplates. We may need to jump farther down. I don't know that we do, and I don't know the way to handle the coyote problem, but I think we ought to at least consider that.
I, I, I think, I think from listening to the, the people tonight and the phone calls that I've received in the last couple of weeks, I, I agree with the mayor that this problem is probably bigger than it's, because it's not just in a specific, specific area. It's not just up in Villa Verde, or it's just not here in the foothills, but it's basically, it's over by the high school. They, they go anywhere and everywhere. And, and so I just relate to, to experiences that I just recently had. Came home a week or two ago, got out of my car, walking down the street, just minding his own business, was this coyote right down the middle of the street. When he got to right where I was, he turned and just kind of looked at me, and, and then he turned his head back and just walked away. Normally, they run, run or do something. This guy just, he owned that street. He, he just owned it. This morning, 7:10, I received a text message from my daughter-in-law, who's taking my grandson to kinder care up in Villa Verde, and she tells me about a pack of, of coyotes in the field where the memory care unit's going to go. She said that they're, they're there. I just happened to be out because I was dropping my grandkids off at day camp, and I went over there, and there were at least five or six right out there grazing like cattle. So, and, and so it's, it's, it's out there, and I'm not into euthanizing and killing and shooting, and I would hope, I know some of the folks talked about it. Please, let, let us, let us put together a program, let us figure out what to do. And I'm quite sure the sheriff, who's sitting in the back corner, would not like to have to have his deputy start rolling on shootings of coyotes and, and missing, you know, something's bad's going to happen. But, so I agree with Kurt, we may have to get down that, that chart a little further, but I'm, I'm hoping we don't, but it, I think it'd be something that we need to study. I'm not opposed to getting together with the, the COG and seeing what they're doing. And if, if, you know, the amount of money's not a lot of money to, to get a, a regional plan, so I'm not, I'm not opposed to that, but I also want to make sure that we address the problem before it becomes a, a major, major problem. And as the audience said, we all have small children or grandchildren, or, or your neighbors, anybody in San Dimas. We don't want to take a chance that somebody's going to get attacked.
Yeah, I, I'm not going to agree with the mayor because I'm upset right now, but I will agree with Emmett. But needless to say, you know, JoJo, the Wolacks were here, and I remember the day that their dog was taken. And, you know, we're, we're friends, and I, I saw it all on Facebook and, and what happened, and it, it was disturbing. And then Noah, the, the dog that was taken from the lady that came here and spoke recently, you know, I think that, I think there's some valid points that the community's raised regarding public awareness efforts. I do think there is some value to moving forward with some public awareness campaigning with regards to securing your homes and your pets and how to best protect them. So I do think we can't discount the fact that there are probably is segments of this community that should hear that information. But all that being said, I'm also not naive to the fact that, you know, there are people that are not going to tolerate these things in their, in their property anymore. And I've heard from a number of them. So I would be interested in if there is any euthanization plan, if Downey has something similar to that, and there's a threshold at which point there's action taken. I'm interested in seeing that as well, because I do agree that, you know, I, I agree with the mayor that, you know, we may be beyond cohabitating together at this point. There may be a few that need to be thinned from the herd. And, and, you know, taking a pet, you know, the, they are bold. I mean, I literally have seen them as well in the morning. I've changed shifts, so when I'm driving to work, I see these coyotes roaming, and they are bold as lions, and they don't care. I mean, they don't stop for cars, they, I mean, they're, they literally just are doing what they do. So I'd like to see some, you know, in, in, in some expediency from local government, not a, you know, three, three, four, five-week-out report. Maybe the next council meeting have something definitive that we can actually do that's actionable, to do something meaningful, to start abating this problem.
So I'm just going to add on, add in that, you know, a lot of the plan is, is information to the community, and it's all, all good. But what seems to be missing except for the tier-five, tier-five response, it is a response. I mean, the, the response is usually, let's collect more information and let's give out more tips and that kind of thing. So that's, I think we need something a little bit better than that. I'll, I'll, I will say that one of the speakers mentioned the environmental carrying capacity, and that was of interest. That is information, of course, but it would be good to know just how, how bad it is. I don't know how you get that count, but it would be good to get that kind of an idea. Hazing seems to be less effective than it's made out to be in the report and in other material, because they talk about, you know, shaking cans full of beans and all sorts of other things, but sometimes it doesn't seem to work. The last thing I'll just say is that, so I, I don't really want to see animals killed. I don't know if removal and relocation is a possibility, but the one thing that we have to realize is that pets are a really important part of the family to a lot of people, I think, to most people who have pets, and it's, so losing a pet or being worried about a pet being outside at this time of night or, you know, in the early hours, that kind of thing, or, you know, when you take the little dogs out and is, was it Jim Wallach who said that, I'm, I'm, same thing, 10 o'clock, if the dogs are going outside, I'm out there in the backyard with them. So losing a pet is very traumatic, and so that's one thing to be realized by the COG. It's, it's not just information and education, it's realizing how, how really serious the situation is.
Well, it's, it's, it's a serious problem, and the solution isn't easy. I know that when I go home at night, I take my dog for a walk with a leash. I don't let him out in the backyard because I'm, I'm afraid to do so. But they say some of these things just don't work, like culling them. They just, more just come, so we may have to go one step beyond this plan to see what we can do, and I'm in favor of that, what the mayor suggested.
Yeah, we can, we can look at option.
Excuse me, Ken?
Yeah.
You know, you know, a lot of us look at Nextdoor, and I don't get all of the stuff Nextdoor, but one of the things that one lady did, she went to Inland Valley Humane Society and talked to them, and then she got a lot of whistles, okay? And then she offered them on, on Nextdoor. She said she had about 100 people get a hold of her to get a whistle. I asked Ken a while back to follow up on that and see if we could get some whistles. And, and I know that it's, just sounds kind of goofy, but, you know, it's something, it's something, and maybe we could, maybe with the support of the council, we could get some whistles, offer them at the front counter, and if anybody wants a whistle to come in, until we can figure out what to do, it'd at least be something, you know, put on your key ring or keychain. According to Inland Valley, it, it's a deterrent. So I, I would suggest that we locate a, you know, thousand whistles or more and put it out there on the city's website and say, come in and get a whistle.
I'm supportive of that.
Well, actually, we, the, the Inland Valley Humane Society had a supply on order that we were supposed to get this week, or last week, actually. They were going to give us 500 of their whistles that we could distribute to the community. We've also looked into purchasing whistles that might have a city emblem on them or something. So that's one thing that we're going to do as a gesture. There was a, a comment made regarding relocation, that's not an option. Fish and wildlife guidelines do not allow you to trap and relocate. So if you do trap, it's, it's trap and euthanize, that's the, the only option.
You know, that's true, and I don't understand that, because we trap and relocate mountain lions, and we trap and relocate bears. Alex, I would like to know why they do not allow us to trap and relocate coyotes.
That's a good question. We're, that is a California Department of Fish and Wildlife question. The COG actually doesn't, we're not like sure why that is not a problem either. We do know for a fact that if you do relocate a coyote, usually they do die in the end anyways. So that is, I guess, something that we're aware of.
But it's, I, I think what we're hearing in the council is that we will see what action the, the COG takes regarding this plan and bring it back to the council. And again, the suggestion by the COG would be that, you know, cities try and adopt the plan as close to what's being presented as possible, but the, the, the threshold and the, the one through five options can be modified by an individual city. And so we'll bring back some options as far as what that would mean if we want to be more aggressive in, in trying to limit the number of coyotes in the community, and we'll, we'll give you those options when we bring it back.
I, I believe that we should support the COG and, and move forward with that, with that, that process. You know, go ahead and put the money to it, but continue with what we need to do on the sideline, and I would like to see those whistles, even if, even if the COG can't get them and they're on back order and stuff. I'm quite sure we can find a place that we can buy 500 or 1,000 whistles.
Yeah, and we have a vendor that we've already.
In a timely manner.
Did the gentleman who talked to us about the Downey Plan, did he leave a copy of that with you?
It's right there on the, on the.
Right on the?
It's green. Yeah, so I'd like to see those, those whistles sooner than later available.
Is that the Downey Plan?
Yes, the Downey Plan is right here with us.
Kurt, someone wants to say something?
Yes. Please come up to the microphone.
I really would like to take a look at the papers that we gave you today, because we have them in PDF and we can share them. I am a member of Coyotes Out of Downey, which is the organization of community members who are working together with the mayor. I can get you the number of the mayor to contact him. I've also been in contact with Bellflower, who is working very slowly because they don't want to make mistakes on coming up with a coyote management plan that is backed by the wildlife for hazing techniques and also with science. They're collaborating with Dr. Niem Quinn from UC Irvine. The papers that I gave you, I can even send them PDF so you can copy paste them. Please do not spend money on that. Everything that you need is available, and I'm more than happy to share it with you.
Well, the, the money that we're going to spend is to get information, but it's also to, the part with the COG is also a part of a, a region-wide area that, that will include some kind of a tracking system and a lot of other things that.
The, the tracking system, coyote catcher, Dr. Quinn is the one that's, that's doing it.
Well, but somebody, you have to pay to get those things maintained and, and to be a part, at least that's, and we are part of the COG, and they're, if, I think the consensus is that we're going to cooperate and, and try to be on a regional basis, but we're also going to look at our own issues.
And it's a two-year commitment, right?
Right, yeah, and it's, it's primarily for staffing. I mean, every, every city who's a member of the COG could have a part-time staff person to, to manage their plan, but this would be a more efficient if the COG hired, for example, one full-time person that would be able to be a resource for all the, however many cities are part of it, rather than each of us hiring a 15, 20-hour-a-week person. So it's, it's more of a cost-effective way to manage the plan. It's not to buy the plan, it's to manage it.
And I'll be more than happy to share everything that I have. I have lectures from the symposium, the USDA symposium in 2014. I have written literature from 2016.
Why don't you, at the end of the meeting, if you're going to be here that long, talk to Brad, the Assistant City Manager, and tell him what you have, and, and he can arrange to get.
I'd be more than happy to send everything. Thank you very much. Also, I, I hope you can read the, the information I brought on the legal issues, because of the, like I mentioned, every single person that has sued on a coyote attack has won. So the legal implications are there, and I think that would be worth your time. I, I read that you yourself are a lawyer, so you would, that, that article was written by a lawyer, so you will probably find it very interesting.
That may be an endorsement or not.
So, so Kurt, do we need a, a motion for this thing?
I don't, I think consensus direction, is everybody satisfied with that? Okay, that's good, we'll take. And the next item will be the, the Gold Line response to the EIR.
Yes, the, I'll call on Larry Stevens for a report. The Gold Line supplemental EIR comments were released last week, and there is a meeting tomorrow morning for agencies to provide response to comments. And so Larry has a brief report and a couple of suggestions.
In general, this is the last step of a normal environmental process. They have a scoping period, we commented on that. They then release a document, we commented on that, and then they are required to legally prepare a response to all the comments they received to the draft EIR. And then they can adopt the whole package by certifying the environmental document with all of those pieces. I think, as you're aware, we have, at the scoping period and at the draft EIR period, we made comments about a number of areas of concern that we had with the document, asking them to provide some additional information, suggesting that there were some mitigation measures that should be incorporated. For the most part, in reviewing the response to comments document, they gave what I would characterize as vague and non-responsive responses to the points that we raised. In the memo that I prepared, we identified three, I probably could have identified six or seven more, where we think they were really not responsive. One example is safety and security. We said there are problems with homeless, there are problems with increased crime, that's been evident on Phase 2A. We need a better plan, we need more cameras, and we actually suggested using additional surveillance, et cetera. This has been a matter that the Fire and Life Safety Committee has been participating in and a little bit frustrated with the outcomes in the plans, and so that's why we tried to raise it again. The response we got was Metro has a homeless action plan, and there's a multi-agency law. The response we got was Metro has a homeless action plan, and there's a multi-agency law enforcement component that takes care of things, and in general, crime is down. So it didn't really respond to the issues we identified, it added no additional mitigation measures. The same thing on first last mile, the same thing on parking demand. In parking demand, we said, "We wanna know what parameters you put in the model? Paid parking? How many people arriving by car? What was the ridership?" Uh, their response was, "We use the Metro 2011 model, and if you suggested that our LMU study that we did last year, using that to suggest that more people arrive at a station by vehicle is overly simplistic," even though it was their own study. Um, so again, I, I don't think the responses responded. Uh, we have drafted a letter that says that. Um, in the end, I think their intention is gonna adopt, assert, to recommend certification of the document without further consideration of any changes, and so for us to try to force more, the next step would be to litigate. I don't know that there's much merit in trying to do that in terms of what we might conceivably accomplish. Maybe we can get better camera and surveillance and coordination by pushing really hard at the Fire and Life Safety Committee, harder than we have, you know? Parking is probably gonna be revisited anyway, because they're, they're doing a separate program for, for parking, and I suggest, think, so, we may not accomplish anything by doing that. So it's really your discretion, do you wanna submit the letter? Do you want us to present it tomorrow? I will tell you that while the other four cities have at least some similar concerns, no one is intending to submit a letter, and no one is intending to appear at the meeting based upon our last discussion with them. So it's.
Is there a disadvantage to submit the letter?
A disadvantage. Um, we probably get 'em mad at us again.
Well, they're already mad at us.
Submit the letter.
There's no disadvantage.
Okay, I would submit the letter then.
Motion. Yeah, a motion and second to submit the letter. Uh, the one part that is still has left out is, you're gonna, you're gonna have a comment in there or take out the?
There are no comments from the engineers. While there are a couple of things that weren't done, they don't think that they're substantive, and so it's not worth adding. So we would simply do the letter as is, without that reference.
So you've done all the work, all we, what we're gonna do is spend the stamp, or are you gonna deliver it? Either way.
Um, I'd probably, I mean, I can go to the meeting, it's tomorrow morning at eight-thirty, and deliver the letter. I think that's kind of a waste of two hours, um, and I think we can get it to the Board's Secretary in advance of the meeting, so that they're aware of our comments. So I think emailing the letter very first thing tomorrow morning is probably the most effective.
Okay. Anybody opposed to, uh, to sending the letter? Hearing no opposition, uh, that's our consensus. And that brings us to the end of the agenda, except for oral communications. This is another opportunity for members of the audience, uh, to address the city council. Uh, we do have a five-minute time limit, uh, please, anybody interested, please come forward and tell us what you have on your mind.
Hello, Wendy Gish. Um, thank you first for sending the letter off to Senator Weiner on the SP fifty, oh, five ninety-two. I appreciate everything that you guys are doing to fight them. Um, it's important that we stand up for our rights here in the city. Um, the other thing, which I should've got up and talked about earlier, was the National Recreation Center, um, up north here. I did go to lean around the San Gabrels last weekend, just to see what it was about, see, 'cause I never actually had gone up there. Um, yes, there's trash. Yes, I will actually agree that people need to freaking throw their trash in the receptacles that are there, instead of allowing it to be trashed. That I will agree with. But I do not agree with anything taking personal property of any sort. I also know that the Wildland Conservancy also wants to take from the San Gabrels all the way through Whittier Narrows, all the way down to the ocean. That is the plan for the future. If you don't think this is gonna die under Trump, it'll be back under the next Democrat president. And everything that's in this thing, as far as that, um, nothing is at this stake, this is the plan for the future, because all it does is take one law to make a change, correct? One law. And if they put it into an ominous bill, which Nancy Pelosi famously said, "We have to pass it in order to read it," well, it's already done. And if they undo those private property rights, guess what? They can take 'em. Then the Wildland Conservancy has money, they can come in and take that property from those private property owners. It's there. It's the blueprint for the future of what they wanna do. I, I don't know how, how to make that any plainer, it only takes one bill. If you look at bills, they take one law to do another one. They build on top of, build on top of. So five years from now, or 2024, when Trump's out of office, because I planned on tweeting him, calling him, emailing him, to actually take the antiquities, um, EO out, and returning it back to the state. And also, Adam Schiff has one called the Rim of the Valley Corridor Preservation Act that was passed by Congress. According to all my sources that are in the media, there's been nothing done. That was eleven years ago. No funding has happened whatsoever to do anything more? Hmm. Eleven years. Democrats have had the House and the Senate both, so has Republicans. This is about control, this isn't about preservation, it's about eventually taking all humans out of the mountains. Does anybody remember, um, The Hunger Games? If not, go watch it, 'cause those fences kept humans from going into the preserve. Think about it. You've got the blueprint right here already. You've got it. So how much longer will it take till you have somebody that really wants to be a dictator and just take it? She couldn't get it passed through the Congress, so she had to go to Obama to get it taken, and that's what they did. Who's gonna stop it? We do. And I, I hate, hate to say this, but Mount Baldy's now in part of this again, and Mount Baldy has been activated. They are pissed beyond measure, because they don't want their houses taken. That's, that's, you start doing that, and then you're gonna continue down the path. They wanna take the Santa, uh, Santa, I can never say that, Santa Susana, mountain range also. So Simi Valley and, uh, San Fernando Valley, excuse me, will be encompassed completely by the mountain ranges if, if the federal government takes it. What are they gonna do to that guy, to those people? They're gonna be completely enclosed in a bowl. Can't go out. If they end up doing what this thing is saying they can do, if they change it, they're not gonna be able to go into those mountains anyway. It's not about allowing people in the, in the community up in the mountains, they have free access to it now. They're not taking buses up to the Rim of the Valley, except for maybe school kids to go up there for a day, but that's about it. It's, it's just a bunch of bogus stuff. It's about control, it's nothing about anything else. But again, I, sorry I didn't talk earlier, um, on this, but it's important that we don't allow this stuff to go through, because it may not be in your lifetime or your lifetime, but it's already set. Judy Chu might go away, but it's already set to pass on to the next person that's there. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address the city council?
This is something real minor or whatever, but as far as I'm concerned, I've been sitting here for the last two and a half hours. I've never been to a meeting before, probably gonna be at some meetings afterwards, but I've been looking at all your names and all your titles here and everything, and I've been standing up here now for the second time, and as far as I'm concerned, looking at, from a layman's point of view out here, all of you guys look perfect in every single seat that you're in. And the next time I come here, I wanna see you in that seat, I wanna see you in that seat, I wanna see you in that seat, and definitely, Mr. Mayor, I wanna see you in that seat. And that's about all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Everybody looks really good in dark blue, I can just tell you that. All you guys have nice complexions. Um, I've been to many city councils, uh, and I can tell you that in my city, I'm in West Covina, um, our people are like, at eye level. I don't see anything wrong with your seating. I would love to see those gentlemen be facing us. That's it. I, I, I think this is a beautiful place. Um, and, and, you know, I can see you all, I mean, I do understand the problem with the, the camera guy, but maybe there could be another solution. Um, I think it's inclusive enough, but of course, I don't know anything about the Brown Act, I just heard something Brown Act today, I don't know. Um, may I approach a Mr., what's your last name?
Yes. I, I have to say, if you go to a lot of city council meetings, you need to get a life.
I'm a stay-at-home wife, so it's not gonna be so.
Ah, okay. Anyone else like to address the city council?
This is a little off-topic, but, uh, I'm very new to this, fresh out of college, and I actually have a desire to learn, like, what you guys do. I would love to take you guys out for an informational interview to see if it's like, this is more my calling, like, city council down the line.
Okay.
Thank you.
We've got email addresses on the city website, you can always email us or give us a call.
What's your name? My name is Mariana.
Thank you for taking an interest.
Thank you. Sandemosca.gov is our website.
Anyone else? Okay, we're gonna bring the matter back to the, uh, city manager?
I actually have nothing to report tonight.
Okay, are we gonna have a?
Oh, we will have Ask the Mayor show this Thursday, um, live call-in show, starting at seven o'clock.
Okay. City Attorney. Uh, members of the city council, first item is reappointments to the Public Safety Commission. We have nine members, uh, who are eligible for a reappointment, uh, and we, I believe we already, last time.
Last, last council meeting, we, uh, appointed three. Tim Hughes, um, Eric Weber, and Edward Rodriguez.
Yes.
Okay, so we reappoint, we, we appointed them.
They were appointed, we're, we're now reappointing.
Reappointing Sylvia Chapman, Larry Gianoni, Gil Gonzalez, Michael Gregory, Morgan Costle, Morgan Co., Bob Olander, and Emma Ramirez.
Okay, we have a motion and second to reappoint, uh, the commissioners just named by Councilman Bedar. Is anyone opposed? Hearing none, that carries by unanimous vote. Uh, now we need to designate, uh, voting delegates and an alternate, uh, or a voting delegate and alternate for the League of California Cities Conference on October sixteen through eighteen in Long Beach.
That sounds like Ryan Vienna.
Is he's, he's the volunteer?
Yeah, that's, that's, I'm, I'm taking Jeff's moments.
You sound like the alternate.
At least, that's, uh, Jeff would say it's the kid's turn.
Oh, okay. Well, now, and are you volunteering as the alternate?
I didn't know that.
Yep, sure is.
Um, you know, October, no, I won't be there.
You won't be there? Okay, is anybody gonna be there?
Other plans, I'm sorry.
Well, I will, I will confirm, as I submitted time off to attend this. I should know in two weeks.
Can I look at my calendar?
But I'll, for now, yes, I'm good, I'm good.
Hang on.
Okay.
Just don't text to ask your wife.
Ask my wife?
Yeah. Well, no texting, right?
No, I'm, I'm, let me, how do you get to a calendar? Oh, that's, uh, Oc- October?
October.
And it's what dates?
Sixteenth to the eighteenth. So it's the eighteenth that you have to vote.
Uh, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, you know, I actually show myself there.
Okay, you're it. So by acclamation, unless anybody objects, Ryan is the voting delegate and Emmett is the alternate. They vote on weighty matters at those conferences. Okay, now, did anybody attend any meetings since the last report at the expense of the city? Nobody has anything to report, so we'll go to individual members' comments and updates. Start with Ryan.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, you know, it's always funny, the, when you never know how things are gonna turn out when you bring them up, and I applaud this young man for being here. Um, I was there not that long ago, and, uh, our community has seen a very long reign of the body that's up here, um, and they continue to be elected. Um, and so in the next, uh, well, hell, it's already started, there's already people campaigning right now, so, uh, there's going to be another election. I'd love to talk to you if you're interested in getting more involved and hear your ideas. Um, I will tell you that, you know, if you watched what happened tonight about this Dais arrangement discussion, two council members said they don't have a problem changing the seats around, and yet they voted not to support the motion to do that, in fact. Uh, and so it kinda goes to the discussion of whether we're too comfortable with where we're at, if we're not comfortable with change. Um, and frankly, that's why I was elected as a first-time candidate with no name recognition, because people do want some change. So, um, so as much as I would love to be sitting in this exact seat at the next council meeting, I probably will not, um, because there is a number of people that think that this configuration should be different in one capacity or another. Um, so, uh, very disappointed with the decision of this body in that particular matter, um, but life goes on, a vote's a vote, and you move on with life. Um, for those who have tried to get in touch with me for the various issues, I have changed assignments, uh, at work, uh, and so I am the early-morning watch commander at Temple Sheriff Station at this particular time. Uh, so if you need to get ahold of me, I'm typically sleeping, uh, until about one o'clock in the afternoon, um, being that I get off at about five o'clock in the morning. So, uh, forgive me if it takes time to get back to you, but, uh, I will get back to you, uh, and, uh, do have time to meet typically in the afternoons before I, um, head into work. So, uh, other than that, thank you everyone that turned out tonight, uh, for the people who lost pets, I'm sorry, um, but I wasn't here two years ago when this council heard that the first time, so maybe this time we'll get something done. Thank you.
I have no campaign statements or other things to discuss right now.
Emmett?
And I was trying to think of something. You know, all I would, you know, every, every, every meeting, we have votes. Sometimes it's three to two, sometimes it's four to one, but the beauty of it is that we all know that when we vote, we're voting how we, how we wanna do it, and how we feel about it. And as everybody knows, there's five council people here. The mayor's a part of that council, part of the vote. So if it turns out three to, three to two, or four to one, the majority of this council speaks, okay? And everyone kinda believes that, uh, Ryan and I think alike on a lot of things, but I will tell you that I disagree with the fact that, that Councilman Vienna should move his seat, he belongs there, it was a three to, three to two. He belongs there. It was a three to two vote. That's how we do it. That's how we've always done it. And as I've told Councilman Vienna many, many times, we got to learn how to count to three. And if you can't count, once you count to three, then that's the way the body has spoken. And we should speak as a one body. And that's, so I would, I would ask Councilman Vienna, when he lays his head on the pillow tonight, to think about the fact that the body spoke three to two, and we move on.
I would comment about a staff report. Brad McKinney, our Assistant City Manager, did the staff report on the National Recreation Area, and I think he did an excellent job, even if you don't agree with the outcome of the vote. I thought it was very thorough, and really, he did a very great synopsis, and thank you very much. The other thing is, we talked about Weiner's 592. The COG took a stand against it, it was unanimous, and we sent a letter opposing this. So the Council of Government is completely opposed to it. And that is it.
Thank you. I have nothing further to add. We will be adjourning this meeting to 7:00 PM on July 25th. We are adjourned.